Good evening, welcome to the February 16th, 2016 Board of Selectment hearing. You'll notice that Mr. Semino is not present. He senses regrets and asked me to let people know that this past Friday, this past Friday morning, he unexpectedly underwet what turned out to be quadruple bypass surgery at the Brigham and Women's Hospital. He's well on the road to recovery. I've been speaking with him daily with the exception of the day that he had his surgery. He remains his typical self. He's being discharged and will be home tomorrow. And he just wanted to let you, or he would like me to let you know that he intends to have all his future heart surgeries at the Brigham and Women's Hospital to the extent he needs anymore. With that, we are going to skip down on the agenda to talk about the policies on workplace violence prevention and professional conduct because of a scheduling matter, scheduling conflict. Ms. Hale, good evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. In your packet, this will be very brief because I know you want to wait until Mr. Semino is back here in person to vote on any of these new policies. But in your packet are both a professional conduct policy and a workplace violence prevention policy. Both of these have been drafted in consultation with our labor attorney and a personnel consultant that we use quite often for our employee trainings. So I wanted to present these to you and see if you had any preliminary questions. But just sort of, you know, very briefly, we, many years ago, we had a professional conduct policy. This one is much more expansive. It takes into account language that stems from the State Ethics Conflict of Interest law, which you'll see reference to in that policy. And it primarily deals with, you know, encouraging, you know, no behavior to intimidate or harass any person or entity. Both policies are applicable to all of our town employees, our vendors, organizations we do business with, and our town officials. The Workplace Violence Prevention Policy is written to foster a work environment free from acts of workplace violence, including threats and acts of intimidation. That one is applicable to not just, you know, the town hall or the police or fire station, but any location where town business is conducted. So that's a bit more expansive. So the Personnel Board will also be reviewing these policies, but we wanted to bring them to the board for your review and approval first.
Quick question before I turn it over to the board. One of these policies is new, the other is an updated slash revised one?
Correct, yes.
Mrs. Faniff?
Thank you, Vanessa. Our question, the pages are numbered, on page four, just a note.
Which one are you looking at, Mrs. Faniff?
Page four, on the Workplace Violence Prevention. Bullet B. It makes reference to a human resource individual.
Correct.
That language needs to be changed because we do not have that position outlined. So language, where it shows up, I suggest that we reword it where necessary.
Certainly, certainly.
Thank you.
Mrs. Shea?
I don't have, you know, specific questions on them, but just in general, thought they're very comprehensive. And I guess if you could just give a little bit of background on, you know, do other communities have these in place, are these similar ones?
They do, Mr. Shea. This stems a lot from materials and training both the manager and I have received through the Mass Municipal Association. For many years, I've been the vice chair of the Personnel Directors Association. We are seeing many more of these policies being adopted, separate from sexual harassment prevention policies. Both the Mass Commission Against Discrimination and the MMA encourage all municipalities to adopt separate policies that can be much more expansive, so they're not vague in any way if they're lumped into one, one policy.
Mr. Kalender?
So, Ms. Faniff, we noticed the same thing. So when I see something like that, that's a, you know, obviously an oversight, we don't have that. Who put this together, where'd it come from?
They were drafted primarily from a combination of other communities, Acton being one, Framingham being one. They've been reviewed by Mr. Purple and myself in consultation with the employee trainer that we use for many of our discrimination prevention policies. And they've also been reviewed by our labor attorney, Mr. Norris, who has signed off on all of them.
Okay. So those glaring errors will be clearly corrected. What do we have in, if we, what do we have in, if you don't have something like that in place now, what is being utilized to ensure that?
I'll let Mr. Purple address that.
So, thank you, Mrs. Hale. So, the intention in this budget season was to go through and work with Personnel Board for reclassification of the Assistant Town Administrator position to incorporate the human resource functions and responsibilities officially into that position. However, for lack of a better word, Personnel Board kind of ran out of time in terms of a lot of the other changes that they're making and the cleanup they do annually to the SAP, as well as the new IT manager position, getting that job description done, working with Municipal Technology Committee and to make sure that that was right. So, at this point, you know, as Mrs. Faniff pointed out, the Assistant Manager, Assistant Administrator is handling those responsibilities. And at the next, I don't want to say available town meeting, but at the next, you know, town meeting, we will be addressing that issue with Personnel Board. That is on the top of their list to officially codify those responsibilities in the SAP.
Perfect, thank you.
Hale, in terms of process moving forward, I would like to get this on the next available agenda so that we can vote and not kick it down the road. Do we need to wait for Personnel, for the Personnel Board to review it?
No, you don't. You know, they'll be reviewing the policies simultaneously, but policies like this that are across the board are really promulgated by the Board of Selectment.
So why don't we then put it on for our next February 29th?
Sure.
Agenda?
Also at that meeting, I know Mr. Kalender has asked about this many times, we're drafting right now a customer service policy. So you'll be seeing that one in your packet for the next meeting as well. It's just going through a final review with Labor Council now.
Is it your expectation that we'd be able to vote on that one?
Yes, it is.
On the 29th as well?
Yes.
So why don't we put these three policies on for the agenda for the February 29th, assuming that's acceptable to my other board members? And we will vote on it when we get a full board. Thank you, Ms. Hale.
Okay, thank you very much.
A follow-up question, Vanessa, excuse me. Have the employees seen either of these?
Not yet. We were waiting to see if the board had any questions this evening. I'd certainly like to share them at this point in preparation for your final vote at the end of February.
I would suggest that you do that.
Thank you, Ms. Hale. Before we move on, Mr. Kalender?
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. So, last Friday, Teri Newman put together an absolutely wonderful documentary, Southborough Veterans Local Life Lessons. And it was at the Senior Center, and it was widely attended. Mr. Rooney was there, our police chief was there, there was, it was a great audience to, for the first, you know, public viewing of this documentary that Teri put together. So it's taken her a ton of effort to do because you're coordinating with some World War II veterans, some from Vietnam era, Korea, me from Iraq and others. And she worked with all of us to interview us and then created this outstanding documentary that is on YouTube. It's, Southborough Access Media has it. And it was, so my wife and I went and it was incredibly moving to see the, and learn from the life lessons of all of our veterans in Southborough. And I strongly encourage folks to take a look at it. It's around 30 minutes. It's people that you know, and it's things that you never knew about them before. Some amazing things that Steve Wynot did, you know, I've known Steve for years, as many in Southborough have. But I learned some new things about him through that documentary. So I just wanted to, you know, publicly thank Teri. I don't know if you can leave your post there for a minute, I just have something I wanted to give to you. You know, so in the Army, we, when someone does something really special, military or civilian, we give them a coin. So this is the coin of the Judge Advocate General's Corps. And I wanted to present that to you and thank you for what you've done for all of our veterans and really for everyone in Southborough that will have an opportunity to view this and learn about our veterans. So, Teri, thank you.
Thank you, Teri. Very well done, Mr. Kalender. First item on the agenda, Final Report of the Sidewalk Construction Recommendation Committee. Matthew Chase, Chairman. Mr. Chase, good evening. First of all, let me say thank you for this report. We had it in our packet, we've all reviewed it. And this again is an instance of a group of residents coming together with a tight deadline and doing extraordinary effort and extraordinary work. So with that preface, I want to thank you and welcome you to tonight's meeting.
Thank you, thank you. It's a pleasure to work on this. We had a great team that helped prepare this whole approach and evaluation. Do you want me to just touch quickly on how we worked through this and how we came about the final product?
Yeah, I think it would be beneficial for those in attendance and those perhaps watching it that have not had an opportunity to digest the report to give a broad brush overview of the committee and the process that you went through. Thank you.
Sure. So one of the first things we did right out of the gate is we wanted to create something that didn't favor one street over another. So we wanted to create a ranking system that we would develop along the way. And the way we formed this and prepared it was that the ranking system, we didn't focus on each street individually, we kind of hit each category. So as I get into a little bit more of the details, that'll become a little bit more apparent. But we worked closely with Karen to, number one, on preparing graphics and things to help us facilitate our conversations. And we learned a lot about identifying destinations and key areas where there's existing sidewalks out there today. We also worked with her to obtain information for the streets that we were going to use for the study. And what we did is we categorized those streets into three different, into three different categories, a collector roadway, arterial roadway, or arterial collector, and a local roadway. And as I stated, arterial collectors and roadways, generally the arterials carry more traffic than a local roadway. So we wanted to kind of pick the streets that we would be evaluating as part of this matrix. We excluded streets that were extremely low volume, had sidewalks already, or were dead-end streets. And then we took those 50 or so streets that fell in those three categories and then we, or functional classification, I should say, because then we developed 10 categories to kind of rank each one of these, each one of these streets. And the 10 categories that we focus on, and the reason why we went with 10 is at the end of the day, we wanted to have something where somebody could relate to the score that we were going to give them. So if we did 10 and ranked them at a score of zero to 10, at the end of the day, we'd have a score up to 100. So I think it's easy for everybody to see or understand, you know, a score of 70 out of 100 versus 70 out of 90 or 70 out of 80. So we came up with 10 categories for that reason, to get that, to get that score. The 10 categories that we picked, the first one was traffic volumes, basically just assessing, you know, which streets had the highest number of traffic volumes. Obviously, that would have a greater impact on whether you needed some off-street amenities for a sidewalk.
And that wasn't done with strict empirical data, was it? Was it just based upon?
It was based on that functional classification that we had done before. So that was kind of the preface for how we would, you know, we all, since we've all lived, we all live in town, we know which streets have a more amount of traffic.
Understood, understood.
But those were kind of the?
Sorry for interrupting.
No, no, that's fine. And the second one was pedestrian activity. What do we know about some of these streets already? Are people walking on the streets with, without sidewalks? You know, is there a tremendous amount of activity going to a destination on that street? And we worked, like I said, we had an aerial, a map of the town with the streets, and we highlighted where all those destinations were, and we used that as the basis for our ranking system. Safety, are there safety concerns? We know there's a lot of documentation out there with some of the other planning studies that have been done in town where there are some safety concerns. I did a quick search of Mass DOT's database to see where some of the hotspots were, and we had a discussion about safety for each particular street. Available right-of-way, there is some information online that we got through the Massachusetts GIS online where we could see physically the right-of-way, approximate right-of-way, but we did rely on Karen on a lot of that discussion. She has a very good understanding of where our right-of-way constraints were for certain Connections to destinations, as I said before, we identified where destinations were in town. When we were ranking each of these streets, when we came to this category, did that street tie into some destination, a school, emergency facility, or some other, you know, development that was already a key destination in town? Connectivity, does a street have no sidewalks today, but if we put a sidewalk in it, would it improve connectivity to another street that already has a sidewalk? Environmental impacts, that's a big one, obviously, especially given some of the tight environmental constraints on a lot of the roadways. But do we have environmental constraints, wetlands, impacts, that sort of thing? That was another thing we considered. Construction challenges, kind of a broad-based category there, but anything that was right adjacent to the roadway, whether it would be utility poles, retaining walls or the such that might need to get moved as a result of putting in a sidewalk on one side of the street or the other. The other thing is we worked closely with Karen, and she's got a good understanding of how things drain either into an existing system or a rural-based system, which just kind of runs off the street. If we put one sidewalk on one side of the street versus another side, you can imagine you have to put a curb in in addition to the sidewalk, or you have to set the sidewalk away from the roadway. So by putting the curb in, does that impact drainage? Do you have to rebuild the roadway to get the drainage to go in one direction or another? And Karen was critical in that discussion. The ninth item was, does it conform to town goals? I did a quick kind of search of some of the old master plans and things that had been done in town over the last 10, 15 years or so. There were some goals out there to actually forming this committee and then actually, you know, meeting other criteria for sidewalks and things. So if particular streets were mentioned in other studies, that they would get a higher score than, than others. And then future need, is there, we know there's some development projects in town that a sidewalk might serve a better, might have a better need to serve any future developments or other areas in the town that are ongoing or could be, that are known today. And then we just went through, as we, we each, we created the matrix, we distributed, we all did our due diligence, did some homework, we ranked them, and then we had a discussion about how we would rank, how we ranked them, what the scores were. If out of the group, the ranking numbers were high and then someone had a low one, there'd be a discussion about what it should be, and we come to some resolution as a whole as to what the, what the most appropriate score would be for each of the 50 streets. In the, in section four of our report, our recommendations, we did make some general comments about what design criteria we were kind of thinking as we went through this process, lane widths, sidewalk widths, curb, you know, that sort of thing. Because I think that kind of sets the tone for how you visualize putting these things, putting these things in. At the end of the day, like I said, we, there is a matrix that we prepared in an Excel format, and you can sort it by any category or row. We went through each one individually. We didn't hit a street and then go through all 10 categories. We hit the traffic volume category first and went through all 50 streets, and then we went, hit the next one and went through all the way across. So as this developed, you know, one night we'd go through three or four categories, next night we'd do three or four, and it took, I think, three nights for us to go through this process. But at the end of each one, we'd re-rank them and see where things fall. And it was interesting to see how different things moved up or moved down based on different categories and how we ranked, how we ranked this. So it was really an unbiased, you know, evaluation criteria in that we just didn't say this street is the one that needs it because, you know, it's been getting the most press or, you know, whatnot. We really kind of took a holistic approach in looking at all the factors that would come down to, to developing a sidewalk. In the, in the summary report, we listed the top 10, and then there was a larger matrix that had the 50. And I will say that some, there are some instances where there's, you know, two number six rankings, and that's just basis as, we didn't, we just rounded to, you know, whole numbers and we came up with the same score. And the, and the final matrix was basically ranked or recategorized and organized as, you know, from one to essentially 50, in ranking the ones that would seek priority first. And we did have a couple of comments in the notes section, there were some things that either there was a portion of the roadway that might have a sidewalk already, or if the road was owned by the state. There were a couple of discussions where we didn't exclude roadways that were, that were under state jurisdiction, it wouldn't be necessary Karen's or the town's position to build a sidewalk. But if it fell high up in the ranking, it might be something that could be pursued under another avenue of funding through the state. So we felt it was important to rank that as well.
One question before I open to the board. Was there any or much residential participation at your committee meetings?
We did have one person come in and kind of present their overview of the town sidewalks and, what's his name, do you remember his name?
Timothy Lit.
Timothy Lit. He came in and presented a PowerPoint presentation to us. I'm sorry?
Bonnie.
Oh, yes, I know, yeah. So he came and described kind of his vision because he does a lot of walking in town. And then Bonnie did come in with a petition. So both of those things were submitted, I think, as part of this final package.
Questions, Mr. Shea?
So, just curious, how many meetings did you have? Five or six?
Yeah.
Five or six? Five or six? So again, thank you for, you know, for a report this thorough and comprehensive to come from that number of meetings, I think is, speaks strongly to the committee and the work that you did, not only at the meetings but outside as well. So the, one of the categories was pedestrian activities. And was there any data that you used from that? Or was that more, you know, from people's observations for, you know, from being in town, what they've, you know, seen?
That was solely on our group's opinion of those streets, or if upon inspections you see the wayfinding paths, where the path's been beaten down on the, on the curb line, where you can see people have just continuously been walking and those kind of things. But we had no doubt of that to kind of help us with that evaluation.
Yep, okay. And how did schools play, and the locations of schools play into the categories that you had?
Schools, as I mentioned early on, we ended up highlighting all the key destinations in town. Schools were obviously a number one priority. And so any streets that, but that, they had got a, or led to a school or to an access to a school was, got a higher score than one that didn't.
Okay. And just curious with the, with the members, was, did you find that more often than not there was consensus in the rankings for the different streets and the categories, or did it?
I think for the most part, we were on the same page for a lot of different, for a lot of the streets. There were some instances where there could have been a high, like three or four of us with a high score and one person with a low score, and it would be a discussion, and it would either be an interpretation or, you know, that person would be like, oh yeah, right, I didn't think of that, but think about it that way. So we did discuss it and then come to some resolution or conclusion as to what the score would be. In a sense, we would, we wouldn't take the high score, we wouldn't take the low score, but we'd take like the average of essentially of, of what the group came about.
Yep, okay. So that's it for questions, but again, thanks to you and to the full committee as well for all your work.
Mr. Kalender?
For those areas that, you know, don't have sidewalks now, maybe don't have lighting as well, was that, is that a consideration? Would there be lighting added, or was that talked about?
Lighting specifically wasn't talked about, but that I think would be in the, that was something that came up in the safety category. Like if we, if we were talking specifically about a street, whether there was a horizontal blind curve or vertical curve, or it was dark, that was the general discussion about, and it was rolled into safety.
Okay.
We didn't specifically talk about adding lighting in any of these locations, that wasn't anything that we specifically said, okay, lighting needs to be added to here, but it was a, a part of the safety category.
Okay, I would agree that it would be part of the safety analysis.
Yeah.
So hopefully something considered, I guess, if, you know, when it comes to pass.
Mm-hmm.
And then the question of asphalt, so versus concrete, understanding the costs, is there any analysis as to how long asphalt actually, you know, is good for, the life expectancy of an asphalt? I mean, we've seen what some of the current ones look like that are asphalt, and they'll crumble, as opposed to spending more on concrete and having more staying power?
I, you know, we didn't look at that from this position of which materials were better. I mean, my personal opinion would be that's a function of the base material and how it's constructed. I think the life expectancy, you know, for asphalt versus concrete, I would think that they're comparable. I think it's just a subject of the base and how you build, how you build the base under that.
Interesting, okay.
You might get a little more durability out of, out of concrete, but, you know, the cost savings, I think, probably outweigh that.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Faniff?
As far as a petition, it was a petition that was presented to this board earlier on, I think it was two or three years ago, and I delivered it on behalf of the residents that wrote it and had it signed. As far as moving this forward, how do you envision that happening? If we have a development going on and you've prioritized a street or streets, are you going to be using this as a guide to implement something in that area?
The plan at this point is that, yes, if something is going in and it's, and if we can, and this is something that we actually have to come up with a policy and then we'll have to vet it through, but, and that would probably go through the Public Works Planning Board to kind of vet the policy. But the plan would be at this point, if there, if a road was in the top 10 to be worked on, that there'd be either some sort of, for the development would put some sort of money towards it, or some sort of commitment towards getting, getting those installed. We've, I've looked at different ways to kind of fund that in terms of like a way we can actually carry money that's donated that way. And the town accountant and I have been working on something, but there's some towns that have it, so we're, we're probably like, going to do a lot like what Sudbury does.
All right, a follow-up on that then, Karen. When the planning board approves a subdivision, there are scenarios when they feel sidewalks are not necessary?
Yes.
Are they putting those funds aside for another area if not necessary in a dead-end street?
Yes, they're.
Do they have a policy for that, or is that just up to?
They've been, I only know of one where they've done it recently, and basically we have a commitment from that developer that he'll build something wherever we want it, but to the value that it would have cost him to obviously build the sidewalk there, which the developer is able to build a lot cheaper than the town can because of prevailing wage rates and everything that we have to, we're involved with. But it does, but this is actually one of the reasons why this, this was important to have a matrix like this, so that I could say, oh, actually, here's where we want to try to use it.
So at the time of pulling a permit for a developer, or when a developer pulls a permit, they've already committed funds to the town to implement a sidewalk someplace else in the town?
No, I don't believe it's already committed, it's.
Well, let's not forget this evening, but I think we need to have, if we're going to have a policy, the policy should include at what point a developer commits to putting a sidewalk off-site in the permitting process, not at the end of their project, but at the beginning or somewhere in the middle, so that you have the funds to work with. Yep.
Couple of questions. I would think that vetting the proposed Capitol sidewalk project would be a perfect, a perfect exercise to engage the Public Works Planning Board in moving forward. My question is this, how is the town in the past, if we have built sidewalks? And the reason I ask that, it seems like a simple question, but for instance, you have the top five streets where the sidewalks are a priority. So we have those five streets, so that this report just doesn't collect dust on it. If those sidewalks or those streets were not scheduled to have development interaction, how would we go about building those sidewalks? Have we done so in the past? Do we go to town meeting and look for an allocation of X in order to build a sidewalk on these particular streets?
In, the way, the way we would be doing now, so I know, like Marlboro Road?
Right.
It came up high, and you guys had talked about that actually as trying to see what we could do as part of, and part of Main Street. So that's one that we'll try to find a way to incorporate in, and it might be something where we try to get, we'll either do try to do town meeting next year, or we'd try to do, have you guys approve through a Chapter 90 to build it. The design, we'd have to get the money for both together, but, so, something like that, which has another project going to it, makes a lot of sense.
What about a road that doesn't have a project on it, but is on this list?
Right, so if there's, if, basically, we get our road money every year to do, to do road work. Right, so if there's, if, basically we get our road money every year to do, to do road work. What we probably want to do is make a commitment that we say, all right, well, based on, based on this report, based on, you know, people coming in and vetting through and this, this was decided to be the project for this year, and then trying to get money, money for that at a town meeting. And if we didn't get it, we just, we would push off to the next year.
So we'd use some of that Chapter 90 money to address the sidewalk concerns? Is that what you're saying or not?
It would mostly, generally, we would not use Chapter 90. I would use the roadway maintenance money that we can put, the roadway, the article that we have on town meeting.
The $250,000?
Yes, and, because then we could actually put it into that and the town can vote that on its own amount versus the Chapter 90, we don't have an option on the amount?
So when we go to town meeting in April and there's, I know it wouldn't be included, but just moving forward, crystal ball type of issue, you allocate $250,000 for road maintenance purposes. Would you then segregate a certain amount to address the, these top priority sidewalks? Or how is that going to work?
Yes.
That's kind of, maybe I'm not asking it correctly.
No, that's, that's what we would do is we'd say, we need $250,000 for road work and another $75,000 for a sidewalk on the street.
All right, so you would identify the specific street? And you'd have an estimate or a ballpark as to what that sidewalk project would cost the town?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Anyone not seeing any hands? Thank you again for, you don't need us to vote on anything, correct? Because there's nothing to vote on, but thank you, Matt, for doing this.
Thank you.
And thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Purple, report on town-owned buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everyone has in their packet, it was out on the website for the public, a report that, that I did for the board regarding some of our, as I would characterize it, underutilized town buildings. Again, it is not comprehensive, but it is to generate some discussion amongst the board as to where we may want to go with some of these buildings. There is an article or a placeholder right now on the warrant for the board to seek town meeting's approval for the, for the, give the board the authorization to dispose of, you know, a particular building or a number of buildings depending on what you're looking for. So I want to put this report together. There were three buildings that I, that I did look at, one being Fayetteville Hall, the second being Fire Station Number Two on Harrington Street, and the third being South Union School. I do think before you move forward, you've got to take a little bit of a step back and just take a look at, at how we, we got to this point. If the board recalls, it was, it was about 13 months ago that the board established a permanent building committee to take a look at reviewing existing plans and to do a town facilities master plan. And this committee was set to work in tandem with the Public Safety Study Committee and, because the work was kind of going to cross-pollinate each other. However, no one was ever appointed to that committee to date and, and therefore, you know, nothing has been done with a master plan for the facilities. And I only point that out just to kind of illustrate the fact that I, I still recommend that a master plan needs to be done on our facilities so we can have a better, you know, understanding and a clear path of how we're going to move forward to address these buildings, whether we keep them or not. We still need to maintain them, we need to keep them in, in good, in good shape because, again, they are our infrastructure and that's, that's where we hold our value. Again, police and fire station was an easy one because of the condition of the buildings and everything. So that was easy, but beyond that, it, you know, it gets a little bit murky. So the Public Safety Committee, Study Committee, you know, has been extremely active. They've met quite a bit. They're in a little bit of a holding pattern at this point as we have discussions about trying to ensure that the site is going to be big enough to allow us to, to put on it what the, the committee has come up with. And, and so that's going to be, you know, moving forward, you know, in the next, in the next several months. But looking at the three, looking at the three buildings that we have, Fayetteville Hall, as I'm sure you're familiar with, is, is located at 42 Central Street. Two-story building, was built in 1911. And John Parent, our facilities director, is here. And so I'll look up every so often and make sure I'm getting everything correct because I had him fact-check me on all this. It's got just over 4,300 square feet of space. In 1999, the town acquired the building next door at 40 Central. The building was raised to make space for parking and to address future septic issues. It is listed as a separate parcel right now. Prior building commissioners have limited the use of the second floor due to structural issues and all operations have been limited to the first floor. Windows were replaced in 1997, the roof was replaced in 2009. The basement has groundwater issues and the septic system in, in places is currently failing. The building currently houses youth and family services, which is right now about two and a half employees, and they do have other people who come in and volunteer their time to get things done for them, as well as South Borough Media Access. Sam, Sam is currently responsible for all operating expenses for the building, but they've recently signed a lease with the school department for a new location at Trotter. That move was supposed to have happened last year. However, due to some, you know, some issues and everything with, with getting the lease taken care of, it looks like the move is now going to happen between now and they should be in their new spaces by September of this year. At which time, the town will have to assume all operating expenses for the building, which is about $7,000 a year for the utilities. The assessors' office has the land and building valued at $557,000, while the empty lot next door is valued at about $172,000. It's worth noting, the parking area for Fayetteville is used primarily for not that building, but for the playground across the street. Fire Station Two is located at Two Harrington Street. It was built in 1953 as a substation to the main fire station on Main Street. I never realized how big the building was until I actually went down there and took a tour through it. It's a one-story block building comprised of just under 2,200 square feet. Floor plan consists of two large bays, offices, kitchen space and restrooms. Fire discontinued staffing in 2006. The last piece of apparatus was removed in 2015. Currently, it houses work and storage space for the DPW Grounds Division. It also has small equipment lifts in there for DPW maintenance to go in and work on, on small equipment. It is heated, so it does give them the ability to do that out of the weather. The building has had its septic system removed and the roof and windows are going to need replacement in the next few years. I believe the windows were replaced not all that long ago. A while, okay, a while back. And the assessors have, you know, have the land and the belt and the building valued at about $359,000. South Union School, 21 Highland Street. It was also built in 1911 like Fayetteville. It's a two-story building, which seems a lot bigger than a two-story building with a usable basement level. It's about 6,800 square feet. It's listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Recreation is the only department that uses the building on a regular basis. They've got two and a half employees, they're full-time equivalents. But there are other boards and committees who do have space in the building. Arts Council, it has the pottery kiln and everything in the basement that Recreation takes advantage of, some of their programming. And several committees in that have their files in there as well. Recreation uses it not only as offices, but they have meeting spaces, programming space. The whole second floor pretty much is used for programming. It's a playground that was put in adjacent to the parking lot. And I learned that it was constructed in such a manner that you could pick it up and move it if you, if you needed to. Obviously, you'd need to find a suitable spot. There is significant work that'll need to be done on the roof and windows in the next few years. And Mr. Parent estimates that the boiler is going to need to be replaced sometime in the next three to five years. And that's not going to be a pleasant project. The assessors' office has the land and building valued at about $1.6 million. So given all these things, you know, what, you know, what is the board, you know, to do or to look at considerations? And, you know, if you'll notice in my report, none of this is, there's not a whole lot of recommendations other than that we need to do a master plan on our buildings. These are things that kind of generate some discussion amongst the board and give you some thoughts about moving forward. So first, consolidating Fayetteville Hall and the parking lot adjacent to it at 40 Central into one parcel. When that, when 40 Central was acquired by the town, it was done so in order to create parking for Fayetteville as well as to provide space to proactively address, you know, any septic system issues in the future. All those septic system issues are here. And while the parking area, while that parcel's been used more for parking for the playground across the street, I don't think that if the board decided to do anything with Fayetteville Hall, it may not have the value it would have if that other parcel was not included. The board could make application to planning to combine the two parcels into a single parcel. One of the other things for consideration, relocating youth and family services. You know, this seems to make, you know, a good amount of sense. Sam is leaving for Trotter later in the summer. You know, you have two and a half employees, you know, in, in an entire building. And oftentimes, they're doing a lot of their counseling services and that off-site, so it's not that they're there consistently during the day. One option, you know, that we've looked at is see if we could find space in the schools. The schools do make good use of the counseling services that are provided by Sarah Cassell and her department. And so they spend a lot of time there, it would seem a natural fit. Superintendent Johnson and I have been working to see if something like that might work based on the, and the needs and requirements of youth and family services. I think it's difficult to some degree with, you know, they've already given up a good amount of space with a separate entrance and it was kind of segregated area for Sam. You know, so that, that may be, you know, a difficult hill to climb for that. Another option would be to relocate youth to South Union School, sharing space, you know, on the first floor with Recreation. You know, I think that Recreation, you know, wouldn't mind having another department in the building. And, you know, there is adequate space on the first floor where for small money, the, the room on the other end of the first floor, opposite Recreation could be built out into offices. There would be some modifications made. Both Recreation, Youth and Family would have offices. They would both have separate meeting spaces for board meetings and they could continue to be programming in the building. And so that is, that's one option that, that could be pursued. The, another thought would be relocating the DPW Grounds Division from where they are now in Station Two. So if DPW moved out, there would need to be some space created on the current DPW property in order to house the, the equipment and provide some workspace for the grounds, grounds crew as well as the mechanic. And speaking with Ms. Galligan, she said, you know, we could accomplish this by putting up another Butler Building or a metal prefab building at the Corderville location. It would be about $30,000 to $35,000. We'd also want it heated so that they could continue to do work in the building, you know, maintenance work year-round. And that was if you moved them out of Station Two. I'm not sure the sell, you know, the, the, sellability is the wrong word because I'm not even sure it's a word. But, you know, the, the viability of Station Two, I'm not sure of, of what that would be on, you know, on the market. So one of the thoughts was, after seeing the space, is, is another consideration would be possibly looking to relocate Recreation. And I think if you take a look at the three buildings, South Union School is probably our most valuable property. When you look at, you know, where it's located, when you look at the parking, when you look at the accessibility of it, the elevator that was put in a few years back, proximity to the commuter rail, I think it's a very attractive property for a number of reasons. If youth is not relocated to South Union, then one option is to look at redesigning Station Two for Recreation. It does have, you know, a fairly good floor plan. There is a lot that would need to be done to it, you know, to provide some programming and office space. It could be upwards of $100,000 or more to make that space usable as well as to put in parking. But one thing in that to keep in mind is that there are current, you know, programs that are currently held in South Union, you know, such as pottery classes and a lot of the, I think, programming that goes on concurrently in some of the larger spaces, you know, that couldn't be, you know, held and no longer offered, you know, if you were to make such a move. Also, any board and committee meetings, you know, that are held there would have to probably be located at other spaces and some of the files that are kept there by boards and committees would have to have consideration for other spaces as well. For Recreation, you know, programming purposes, they would have to find other space to do these things if the programs were to continue. This happens in other towns. And normally what happens is whatever those rental costs are, if it's a mommy and me program and you've got a rent space in a church or rent space in a school, then those costs are passed on through the program fees to the, to the participants. And so that's something that, you know, that would have to be considered moving forward. One other item which, which kind of gets a little bit out of the wheelhouse of those three buildings that I figured I'd take the opportunity to bring it up while we're having the discussion, is redesigning some of the office space here in the townhouse as well as the lower level of Corderville. You know, we've got a real significant space issue in this building in terms of, you know, the current departments we have here. You know, we've kind of run out of space for our day-to-day functionality and our storage. The basement, if you've ever been down there, if you've ever hit your head on that beam, you know, it's limited in height, it's prone to, as I say, seasonal water infiltration and it has many seasons. It's full of file cabinets and shelving, filled with storage boxes. There's no temperature control, it affects the deterioration of the records. And in the same vein, the basement level of Corderville, which houses Board of Health and Veterans, is not well situated for maximum residency. There's a lot of wasted space. And I met with, with the building commissioner, Mark Robideau and John Parent, and they put together a plan to try and maximize the space on the second floor of this building as well as the space in the basement level of the senior center. And there are copies of proposed floor plans for both buildings in your packet for you to take a look at. You will note that the plans don't identify any departments as to where things may go because obviously there may need to be some shifting of departments from where they currently would be. You know, I don't think it's prudent to have such a discussion until, you know, there's some indication that you kind of like what you see. Essentially, we'd be, you know, restructuring the building office, conservation and planning department spaces to create a more open concept area, including a service counter. Department heads would maintain private office space while creating more shared spaces where the administrative staff would, would better be able to, to serve customers and cross-pollinate for departments, so to speak. So you would not have maybe a specific person handling building, a specific person handling planning. You know, there would be people who could, you, were well-versed in both that could help you. And revising the footprint in the basement level of Corderville to add two more office cubicles. We would also better define the space for the proposed new IT manager position. That only makes sense because that's where all of our servers are located. Rather put the person responsible for those things where everything is. And also putting in a service counter near the handicap ramp entrance into the basement level. Again, the plan may, would require shifting of some departments from their present spaces. Another benefit of this reorganization of space would potentially be freeing up additional space in the room that is right off the assessors' office. If you've ever walked into the assessors' office and started to go around the counter, it's a space, it's an office or a room right to your right. And my vision would be to enlarge that room slightly, taking a little bit of space from the adjacent office and to make it a copy and mailing room for the, for the townhouse. We put the large copier, the mail machines in there. And all of those mailboxes that are right inside the door as soon as everybody walks in would be relocated up into that space as well. I think it would clean things up nicely. Again, these are some, you know, some initial thoughts, things for you to think about. It's more to generate some discussion and to see where the board wants to go. You do have an article, a placeholder right now for the warrant for potential disposition of buildings. And if there's a particular direction that you want to head in to better define that article, I think that, you know, we need to get moving on that. So that is the gist of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Flinder.
So we have been talking about this for quite some time. I mean, I recall having discussions about, you know, these and other properties for, for years and they're still here. And, you know, one thing I didn't see in here is the maintenance costs for some of these buildings, which I trust can be quite high. these buildings, which I trust can be quite high. So one of them, the septic is failing. Obviously, that is very expensive to have to replace. The, you know, where the arts center is, you know, the building is not getting any younger. And I can only imagine that, you know, the costs associated with maintaining that building. I've been in there plenty of times and for other meetings with, you know, or you mentioned other boards that meet there, the Southboro Little League, we meet there every month. I mean, it's...
And it being on the National Register is going to make those maintenance costs that much more expensive because they've got to be specific to...
Right.
Standards.
So, so the heating is not ideal. I mean, it is, it is, it is a tough building to, to ask, you know, recreation to continue to operate out of. What limitations are there on trying to dispose of a property like that because of it's, it's on the National Historic Register?
I, I don't think that, you know, it proposes potentially some challenges to a prospective buyer depending on what they want to do with the building. I'm not as familiar with the, with the Historic Register as to what, you know, what you can do inside. I think obviously for exterior is where a lot of that control lies. But if somebody bought the building and they wanted to, you know, in my mind, it would make perfect sense to turn it into condos. You know, I mean, if you've got, you know, you know, newly married couples who want to, who are commuting into work, you know, in Boston or otherwise, you've got the commuter rail, you know, two hundred, three hundred yards away, you know, something like that.
Be ideal for something.
It would, it would make sense for something like that. But again, I'm not quite sure how that, how that would impact, you know, the value for, for somebody who's purchasing. I guess it depends on what they want to do with the building.
So I guess my, my main point is I, I, I think it's, I would love to see something actually done. I mean, you know, so we've got a town meeting coming up. We have an opportunity to do something with, with any or all of these buildings. You know, my position is I'd like to see us act on these things. I mean, again, there's, they're only getting older and more expensive to maintain. I think it's a benefit to the taxpayer. It could be a benefit to the, to the employees that work in these buildings to have, you know, space that is up to current standards that other, you know, departments, you know, are able to, to have. And so I guess I'd, I'd like to know what, what would the next steps be? If we wanted to decide to do this with any of or all three of these buildings, you know, what administratively do we need to do and do we need to have, you know, who else needs to be involved? You know, are all of, I know that, you know, you've listed out other options with departments. Are those department heads, I trust they've been involved in these discussions and are they amenable to seeing these buildings sold?
So to answer your first question, yes, all the department heads that would be involved in this, you know, we, we sat down and had a whiteboard session about all of these things and they saw the report in advance. And to answer your second question, as to their willingness to dispose of the buildings, I guess the comment back would be depends on the building. So, and again, a lot of these things are if this, then this. If youth and family could find space in the schools, that then opens up the possibility of does recreation go someplace else in order to make South Union a viable property to dispose of? If youth and family cannot find another location, you know, then it makes, then doesn't make sense to put them in South Union, you know, as a, you know, as a temporary, you know, stop until we figure out what we may want to do. At the end of the day, I think everything, I'm not dodging the question. I'm just trying, I'm trying to work my way through this. I think Fayetteville is the easiest one to answer because you will have Sam leaving this summer, okay? And then at that point, we just have a, we have, you know, a small department that's located in there. It makes sense that that small department goes someplace. Where that department goes then will determine what else you may be able to do after Fayetteville.
And for that particular spot, the, you mentioned the parking lot that's there. I mean, yeah, I think it is used somewhat for the park across the street, but there's parking on that, down that side street, there's parking up and down Central Street. I don't know that it's needed for those utilizing the park to have that lot there. I mean, so the plan would be to sell the property and the lot together, which I think makes complete sense. I agree that doesn't, you know, having one without the other is, is, it wouldn't, wouldn't be a great buy for someone. So I think if you're looking at any of these, that one looks like automatic, the most viable. And then, you know, again, I come back to the arts center and I think it's been time, it's been a long time coming for us to do something about that building. And, you know, and I, I've been a proponent for rec, I love, I, I look at what Hopkinton did recently and approved funding for a, a new indoor facility that could be utilized by so many of our kids for, you know, soccer, lacrosse, basketball, baseball, football, you name it, that, you know, those, if we were to have something like that and a place for rec to have some, you know, some new depart, you know, new, new offices, new, new space for them to work out of, I think would be ideal instead of, you know, moving them into, you know, Station Two. So, again, I think, and we, we received an outstanding analysis from both advisory and Brian about our, our debt capacity, our ability to incur new debt for some new buildings. And again, I think that the time is now for us to act. I don't want to kick this can down the road another year. If you've done your work, the departments have bought into it, it's, you know, in my opinion, let's do something.
Mrs. Faniff.
I, whatever we decide to do, we need to do with some level of caution here to just decide to move on any of these other than Fayetteville Hall, which I agree with Mr. Clender. I think that we're beating that to death. It's, has little use to the town. It's underutilized. And if we're gonna join the lots together, we need to determine what the overall value is. Is it the dollar value we're looking for? Is it just to get rid of two pieces of property? That we need to identify first because they each have their own purpose right now. Station Two, if it has a value of three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars and moving one department into it, it's gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars or more. Now you're talking two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars as far as if, if we did nothing with it, we're not, we're, we're losing money because we have a station that we might use, we might not use for its purpose. It's gonna require a hundred thousand dollars. There are, there are two things that we can do and take action on at town meeting. One, Fayetteville Hall and relocating the grounds department to the DPW with a request for thirty-five thousand dollars. That basically is a wash without identifying someone going into Station Two at this point. I'm not sure I'm willing to spend a hundred thousand dollars on a building. If I was to spend a hundred thousand dollars, I'd want to put it into South Union and move the Board of Health and the Veterans Agent down there and utilize that building to its capacity level, whatever that may be, and save the playground. But I think we're just moving dollars around and departments around and we don't have a long-range plan. And I know we needed a master plan and I agree with what Mark said initially. But Fayetteville Hall to me would be number one. And working with the Public Works Planning Committee and Karen and getting a Butler Building or whatever is necessary to put the grounds personnel and the equipment down there, to me is the simplest to start with. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Shea.
So I agree with a lot of what's been said so far, but one additional point that I'll make, two weeks ago or so, the open space and recreation had a meeting at Corderville Hall for an update on town's long-term open space and recreation planning. And there were probably forty, fifty people that showed up at that meeting. It was very well attended and wanted to touch on the point that Dan made earlier. One of the consensus points of agreement that the group had was for a recreation facility similar to what Hopkinton has. Now, obviously, that's a long-term goal. We're not gonna solve that problem right away, but I would like to think that we could work towards that as well. And I don't know if there's a report that you're gonna be preparing or finalizing and updating to, to document that. But it was a very well-attended meeting and really touches upon the point that you made about, about recreation. I agree with Fayetteville Hall being the number one priority for us to take action on now. It's frustrating that so much of that space in that building is unsafe for use. And one of the other buildings that has a lot of space that isn't used, and I'm not advocating that we do, take any action on that now, but is the, is Corderville Hall itself with a second floor of that, the house portion of that building. So much of that is not used with accessibility limitations there. So there's just so many buildings that we have that have spaces that can't be used. With the South Union School, you have a line in your report that Arts Council does have space in the building. Do they have programs there still? Are there artists that use that facility or...
I'm, I'm seeing no from, from our rec director, no. But they, they do have, they do have the kiln and all of the facilities that they do allow recreation to use, so Doreen takes advantage of that for programming.
Yep. So I guess from that perspective, I'm hoping that we can just continue to permanently refer to that as the South Union School building and not Arts Center anymore. I know a year there was a lot of use of that building as the Arts Center and years passed, but it seems that that, that use has gone away. But I would, and the utility costs for Fayetteville Hall order magnitude seven thousand a year, is that figure included in the budgets that were presented to us? Are we assuming that we'll be taking on those costs or will those need to be added in?
That'd be something that, that's kind of a risk that's assumed in the budget numbers. I think we could absorb part of that. All of it would depend on the year.
Okay. So, but it would make sense to me that with Sam leaving that building to find another place...
Right.
...for Youth and Family Services to go and...
Right. And, and you know, and, and, you know, my conversations with, with the department heads and especially recreation, you know, and I, I know Doreen would like to, you know, she wants a new facility as Mr. Clender and you both have spoken about this evening. You know, she'd like someplace new along the lines of what Hopkinton's doing. And if we're going to go that route, then stay in South, you know, South Union now rather than trying to do a stopgap and then move someplace else, you know, it's, it's, that would be the preferred method. I know that doesn't always, you know, doesn't always work, but, you know, if at all possible. And again, you know, it's one shoe, two shoe. If youth and family doesn't have another place to go, then it would make sense and the space fit, you know, sets up nicely to, to do, you know, to set them up in South Union, you know, for the time being. And to Mrs. Faniff's point, you know, yes, we could move some other offices and everything down there, but you will take up additional space, which then means we've got to put, you know, programming somewhere else or we just, you know, eliminate those programs. So that's, you know, another, another consideration.
So when I asked each of the members of the board to send to the town administrator their top three goals, policy goals for the next coming year, included on my top three was the evaluation of town buildings. Because I, I feel that not only do we have a responsibility to make recommendations at town meeting relative to spending of tax money, but I, I see us also having a, a corollary obligation to make sure or to satisfy the residents that we're managing their money appropriately. And I don't think we are managing their money appropriately by continuing to have buildings which house two or two and a half employees. It just doesn't make sense. There's no other way to say that than that. Yes, we need a master plan, but at the same time, I, I don't think we need, we should wait to act until we have a full master plan because it's the consensus of your review of the buildings and it's clearly the opinion of this board that there are a number of buildings that need to go independent of a written master plan. That said, it's important to make sure that our existing departments are, are comfortable and know where they're going to go if we are going to make a recommendation at town meeting about the sale of a building. Sam is going to be moving out of Fayetteville Hall. That will leave Youth and Family Services who have a particular need for confidentiality in terms of entrances and exits. So we need to make sure that if we are going to propose the sale of Fayetteville Hall and its adjacent lot, that before we do so, we have a plan in place for their relocation. So I would, I would recommend that we find another place for Youth and Family Services between now and town meeting in April and we can have a motion or an article for the sale of the Fayetteville Hall and the, the adjacent lot. With, with respect to Fire Station Number Two, what I'm hearing is that the equipment that's in there now can be housed in a, in a Butler Building for thirty-five thousand dollars, which then would result in our ability to sell that for, the success value is three fifty-nine. I don't know what the market value is, but again, pouring money into that location with the hope that we could squeeze recreation in there in the future does not, is not consistent with my feelings of use for that location. So I would, I would also include in addition to the Fayetteville Hall article, it also include or there'd be a separate article for Fire Station Number Two. With regards to South Union Hall, again, we have two and a half employees in a building that has three floors. But in order to satisfy recreation's need, we need to have an alternative plan for the recreation and for them to be able to conduct their programs. So I would not include the South Union School on this April's town meeting discussion. But we need to include in the discussion, and maybe it's part of the master plan, and Mr. Shea, you mentioned it, Corderville Hall. Here it is, we have a building which has three functional floors, but we're only using two because of the lack of handicap accessible access to the second floor. Well then, we need to fix that. We need to fix that. We need to invest money in that property to the extent that the decision is to keep that property to utilize that second floor because right now, we're only using two-thirds of the building. Doesn't make sense. We need to use every portion of a building that we're committed to maintaining. One of the concerns I heard mentioned with regards to South Union Hall in your report is you indicate that significant work needs to be done. Well, that's troubling. If you're talking about windows and a roof, we need to make a decision on the South Union School, maybe not as urgent as these other properties, but we need to make it in the not-too-distant future. And maybe in some of our negotiations that we're doing now, we can address the recreation needs such that at town meeting, perhaps we can lay out a plan or a vision relative to all of our town buildings and any proposed plans moving forward. So what I would recommend, and to the extent it needs a motion, which I'll rely on you to tell us whether or not we need that, that we recommend to South, to town meeting, that the town proceed to sell Fayetteville Hall, the lot next to it, and Fire Station Number Two. And, and to have a discussion, a continuing discussion with regards to South Union, but I don't think the time is right such that we can satisfy the needs of existing departments by putting that one on the proverbial selling block at this point.
So just one other point is if we're going to do, if we're gonna go down that road, then I think we need to supplement the capital budget with an additional thirty-five thousand dollars for Public Works. dollars for Public Works in order to put up another building to take care of those things that are currently housed at Station Two.
Yeah, and I would be prepared to make the argument at town meeting that thirty-five thousand dollars additional in the DPW budget with the expectation that we can secure somewhere in the three-hundred thousands for Fire Station Number Two is a good deal for the town. Now, in terms of process, we can put those, that information before town meeting. Should we, at the same time, have appraisals prepared for town meeting, or can that be done subsequent to the vote at town meeting? In other words, town meeting obviously needs to, or at least should know, what the value of these parcels are in terms of the sale. We have the assessed value, but I don't, I think we need something a little bit more...
We could, we could get appraisals in time for town meetings so that you could speak to the actual value of the properties. I think what you're seeking from town meeting is the ability to, you know, to give the selectmen the authority to dispose of the disposition of these properties, which then, you know, doesn't mean you have to do it now, doesn't mean you have to do it six months, but it gives you the ability to do that, you know, when you feel that the time is right.
I think it would be helpful for the discussion at town meeting, for town meeting to have an understanding as to what the appraisal or the market value of the properties are.
We can get those.
And also, we need to have a plan in place for the relocation of Youth and Family Services.
And we have that in place if that, if the destination is South Union.
Okay.
We have that in place. We have been proactive with Mr. Parent and Ms. Cassell. We've taken a look at the space. I think if Youth and Family had to move there, she's, would be excited about that. And again, I think Doreen would kind of be excited about getting a roommate because it gives you some more, you know, some people. Plus, it also is a space that meets the needs of the department in terms of a separate entrance to maintain that confidentiality that they require with their clients and things like that.
So with Fayetteville Hall, would we be selling two separate parcels, or would we be selling one parcel?
You could sell it as two separate, or you could have Planning Board join it into one parcel so that you're selling one parcel.
Well, I would like to maximize the return, and again, that's beyond my...
I think maximizing the return, and again, I may, I may be completely wrong, but if you're selling Fayetteville Hall without any parking, I don't think it has the value. The same person is going to want to have to buy both.
Well, from what I understand, you told me that Fayetteville Hall needs a lot of repairs, and in fact, the septic is failing. So my sense is that whoever buys Fayetteville Hall may be looking to start something fresh at that location.
And that was the purpose that you bought Forty Central for in the first place and raised, appeared to be a fairly perfectly good house, so that you'd have that space to do just that.
Well, why don't we, why don't we figure out what we're going to be asking town meeting for, whether we're going to be, because again, it's another question that I think deserves an answer, whether we're going to be selling it as two parcels or one. We may not need authorization for that because we're just asking for authorization for Fayetteville Hall or both parcels?
You just, you're seeking the disposition of the parcels, you know, so you can do a lot of that work after the fact, but you are going to need that information. And, you know, I guess what we could do is we could get the appraisal, you know, Bonnie's shaking her head, so I think I'm going down the right road.
I think what you need is an appraisal for the individual parcels and what the value of the combined parcel would be for town meeting, so they'd understand the true value.
Okay. So before I were to make a motion, if anyone has any comments about the comments that were made for the board, or if anyone, our meeting is not as well-attended as it was the other night relative to medical marijuana, but that said, there are a few attendees. Mr. Hegarty, good evening.
Good evening. I would just like to throw in my two cents. I understand now why Mr. Berry said that I would not make a good clerk because I was too tall, and I have hit my head more times than I can count on in the basement storage area and in what is referred to as the clerk's vault, which is actually a Moesler safe door on the back of a, the back end of a closet under the stairs. And we have records down there, original town records going back to the seventeen hundreds, that is stored improperly. We have humidity control of a portable humidifier. We have no environmental controls for heat or cold. In the summertime, that room on the weekend gets up to close to a hundred degrees.
If I can stop you right there, Mr. Hegarty, we have had many discussions with Harvard relative to their climate control facility that they have in town, and they have always indicated a free willingness to partner with us in terms of storage. So to the extent that that is an issue that needs to be addressed, I don't think you need to wait or to get anyone's permission to begin those discussions.
The, one of the, one of the things I tried to quantify in the time I've been down there, and to kind of frankly kick this can down the road, was to try to keep track of how often we go in the vault and why we go in the vault, under the theory that perhaps if we could just eventually scan all this, get rid of the original paper records. And that actually hasn't been the case. Just two weeks ago, we had to go back and look at an original paper record from seventeen thirty. And last year, Town Council had a look at original records from eighteen hundreds. So I just throw that out there. We are, and we will for the next, not for this fiscal year, but for next year, address how we should resolve this issue in terms of what's scanned, what needs to be retained, how it should be addressed. But I just want to throw that out there, that it's not an issue that's come up in any discussions about anything in this building. We're bursting the seams in terms of papers. It's something we hopefully will work towards with the new hire we have, but I just wanted to float the issue that this is an issue that's going to have to be talked about in fiscal eighteen.
Yeah, I don't think anyone is prepared to try to house additional departments in the basement or the vault, or whatever term you use to describe it, but to the extent that you can determine what needs to be saved in paper form and then perhaps relocated to a facility that can handle it better than our temperature controls. I do think we have that capacity in town. And the frequency of review of the documents obviously will go into the decision about its relocation, but again, Harvard is indicating nothing but open willingness to work with us on that.
Thank you.
And just one other thing to Mr. Hegarty's point, you know, this is the perfect, the perfect type of thing for CPA project. I've been involved in that in other communities whereby the permanent records are preserved, and at the same time, PDFs are made of everything. And then there's, you know, you have a separate hard drive. Everything is categorized and organized on that and everything in that, so that you, you know, you don't have to go back into the original document anymore. You can put those into storage and that, and all of that information will be available for you, you know, electronically.
Unfortunately, that's not true. And I've talked to CPA about it. I wish that was the case. We absolutely cannot do it with our town CPA. Can't be done.
We've done it in other communities. So it's up to what CPC is willing to do.
And this group is not willing to do that, and they will not touch any record that's less than fifty years old, so.
Well, you know what, rather than going back and forth with regards to what CPA, we can just ask Town Council to give us an opinion as to the viability of using those funds for that purpose, and that we could put that matter to rest. Anything else?
Just one question. You had touched on, you know, whether, a motion for this, where we do have a placeholder article in the warrant now for disposition of surplus property. Do we need to have a motion in a vote audit, or do we need to just formalize the wording of this placeholder article?
I think it would be good to get a formal sense of where the board is. What I'm hearing is that the board, you know, is, would be looking for the approval from town meeting for the disposition of Fayetteville Hall and the parcel at Forty Central Street, the adjacent parcel, as well as the disposition of what is the building commonly known as Station Two, and also, and also the addition, you know, of thirty-five thousand dollars into the capital budget in order to accommodate the needs of DPW with the disposition of Station Two.
So is that all one article?
No, the capital piece will be addressed under the capital article, but the other two pieces, the disposition of the two buildings or the three parcels essentially, would be under one article.
So answering Mr. Shea's question, do you want, should we vote, or should we not vote?
Sounds like, yes, we want, he wants to vote.
And so you made a motion already?
Yeah, I don't know if I made a, if I made a motion, it was not particularly artfully phrased, so let me try, let me try it again.
All right.
I'd move that this board vote to support the sale of Fayetteville Hall, the Fayetteville Hall structure, the adjacent parcel to Fayetteville Hall, and the property commonly known as Fire Station Number Two.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
So the only, no, just to accentuate the fact that if we were to move Youth and Family Services to South Union...
South Union.
All right. I just, I guess I don't see it as a school, and there's arts work that's done in the basement. So to the school, then that would only be temporary. Also, as part of the analysis to me is, I don't want to keep perpetuating and moving people in to an incredibly old building that has cost a lot of money to maintain, and it looks like we're, you know, just going to continue with that one too for years. So as part of the analysis would be, all right, we're doing this, but it's temporary because there's a plan that needs to be put in place for a new rec building, and hopefully a rec facility if the town will approve it.
You can, I mean, you can use the word temporary, as long as you understand the word temporary probably has an actual five to seven year.
Well, not with this board. I don't think it does.
Well, no, I understand, but I mean, but it's not that it's a, it's a six-month venture. I mean, I think that, you know, we're going to, I would hope...
Well, we operate year to year, so I would say...
No, I understand.
I think, I think you can be assured based upon the comments that although the South Union School may have survived the chopping block, if you will, this evening, its future as a town-owned building is tenuous at best.
And I, and I think it's, I think its lifespan as a town building is tied directly to some of the capital improvements that have been outlined by the Facilities Director as to, you know, we don't want to be owning that building when we have to replace the boiler and do the, you know...
Can I ask the building inspector one question?
Facilities?
Facilities. You're going to have to come to the microphone. You've estimated the useful life of the existing boiler to be between three to five years. You did not give us a corresponding useful life on the roof and the, I think the windows you mentioned. What are we looking at in terms of worst-case scenario and best-case scenario for the roof and the windows?
Windows, I believe it was last year, I had a number come forward for the exterior painting again. As you know, they did a restoration project a few years back that was covered by CPC funds. Maintenance is not eligible for CPC funds, and to do the windows properly on the exterior, you're looking at thirty thousand dollars, that last year's figure.
That's just for paint?
Just for paint.
So it does not need to be done for the function of the building? It's just for the appearance? Is that...
Appearance and protection of the windows. Paint's already peeling.
Okay. All right. What about the roof?
Roof, I just had, I believe it was about five thousand dollars worth of repairs done this year to reseal seams and such. I had that long-term capital, don't hold me to this number, I believe it was in the ballpark of about seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars.
Approximate timeframe?
Depends on how long the patches last seriously.
I know your crystal ball is somewhat opaque on this, but...
It's a tough one on this one, yeah.
Could be next year, could be three years, could be five.
I think we could get five. I really would not try to push past five.
Yeah, I think there's a commitment on this board to keep that on the top, or keep it on top of the discussion moving forward. And obviously, it fits in line with a broader view or broader plan relative to recreational facility in the future in terms of a vision.
Okay.
So with that said, my motion, if you recall, what, yes, Ms. Fanof?
Funds for appraisal. Do we have those?
Thirty-five thousand?
You do have, you do have funding left in that engineering consulting article that you control, so if you want me to go and do that, I can do that out of that fund.
Yes.
Okay.
I believe we agree on that. We need a number.
Yes.
And I will do the two parcels, forty and forty-two separately and together, so you can understand the value.
And the Fire Station.
And Station Two, yes.
And that will be all included in one article at town meeting?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, for putting that report together. That was helpful. Update on April eleven, twenty sixteen, town meeting warrant. I think this is on because there was some discussion during the, I believe it was the medical marijuana agenda item about potential new citizens' petitions coming forward, asking the Board of Selectmen to reopen the warrant. In a subsequent conversation with one of the, I guess, putative petitioners, I indicated that we would not do anything during school vacation week because of the potential lack of attendance or those interested. So to the extent that they are going to come forward with something, I want to give them an opportunity to do so, but the opportunity or the clock for doing so is ticking. So I would, I would recommend that to the extent this board is going to have a discussion relative to reopening the warrant, that that discussion take place, to the extent we can identify a date, it would be on our February twenty-ninth meeting. So I'd ask that any citizens' petition, I don't know if I can, I probably can't put a deadline on this, but I'd like to at least encourage that to the extent there are any citizens' petition, that they try to get that to us in advance of February twenty-ninth, so that we could consider the reopening, to the extent there is a reopening on February twenty-ninth.
If it's a citizens' petition that they are intending to try and get it on the annual town meeting warrant, if there's a citizens' petition attempting to have a special town meeting, that's a whole different story.
Yeah, that's, I was talking about the April meeting.
Right, okay, yep.
Is there any other update? I kind of spoke out of turn there. I didn't know if there was...
No, 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 that's, you kind of told me where you wanted to go. So essentially, some of the placeholders have slipped off of the, of the warrant from the time that I gave it to you in the packet and put it up on the website. I was notified by EDC that they've asked to take their placeholder off. It appears they're not going to look to change the existing statutory law, statute that is on the books for the IDC. I think they're going to follow Council's advice and work under, you know, work under the statute as an EDC, which Council has opined that they are able to do. There are a couple of other articles that wording is being prepared for. We're still waiting for some wording on Fox Hill Drive, excepting that as a public way. Did some nice work. We had a small, a small group session with members of Green Technology, as well as Public Works Planning Board, to go over the article for the transfer station, waiting for the language to come back from Green, Green Technology. I think that everybody is in agreement as to moving forward with that. We'll bring that back to the board. And Town Council has reviewed a lot of these articles already, the four articles for the town clerk, the article for a new noise bylaw. And so everything is coming together rather nicely, waiting to see where the Planning Board articles fall out, but, but everything is coming together nicely. And tonight, you've solved another piece of the puzzle with regards to the article for surplus properties.
Yeah, one question. Right now, we have a placeholder for Article twenty-two, easements for Main Street Reconstruction Project. When will that have any more degree of specificity?
So that is something that Ms. Galligan is working with Attorney Cipriano on, and trying to determine from the state's perspective as to what they actually need us to have in there in order to ensure that the project continues to move forward. And I'm not sure to the extent of what easements. I don't know if Ms. Galligan's able to offer any specifics.
I guess my question is this. We are about six weeks away from town meeting, and are we waiting on the state to give us some definition or information with regards to these easements? And the reason I'm asking now is because I don't think we want to get that information a week or two before town meeting and then try to have the discussion at that point.
Attorney Cipriano, I believe, he was trying to get something to me next week on that. The seventy-five percent plans are in, and those actually show the easements right now. They need to be posted on the website, and I just had a issue with organizing the website so I could get them so more people could find them. and I just had a issue with the organizing the website so I could get them somewhere people could find them. But, and once that's, the, the article is actually, the state requires the article allow the selectmen to, to do this, to, to do, accept by gift or, or, um, or negotiate or do a taking on, on properties. So the actual detail of it is just in the seventy-five percent plans for this first town meeting.
And is it one article for a number of easements or individual articles for individual easements?
No, it's one for, yes, it's, it's one for everything. It's one for global permission is what the state needs. And then Attorney Supriano needs to work out what he specifically wants and that's the piece we're missing.
So town meeting would be voting to authorize the board to engage in negotiations with the homeowners as opposed to voting on the easement itself?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. That's those two different things, correct?
Yes.
All right. I had one more question. If, if someone else wants to jump in while my brain catches up.
John, if I could. Um, so with some of the, uh, articles that are on here, like the noise, et cetera, solar bylaw, other planning board bylaws, are public hearings required?
Yes.
For those? And have they been held, scheduled?
Planning is having, um, hearings as we speak and we will be scheduling hearings, uh, for road layouts and as well as, uh, some of the other bylaw articles as well.
And will there be presentations to us on each of these? So we can, you know, hear them, be able to ask questions?
I think there will be, there will be some presentations. The noise bylaw, for example, was, uh, was something that came out of discussions and the project, um, that, um, that happened over at Clifford, um, this past year with a lot of the, the building. There is no noise bylaw on the books. There is no start time or stop time for, for a lot of the construction work. I know that, um, Mrs. Faniff has, has brought to me some issues of the same vein and, um, people were asking about bringing something forward. This is very similar language to what other communities in the area have for noise bylaws. And so, um, uh, town council has, has worked to put that together. So yes, there, there should be, there will be, um, some level of presentation of these so that you can have a chance to ask questions.
All right, cause, and just, again, looking ahead at schedule, cause John had mentioned, we're roughly six weeks away from, from town meeting now and several weeks ahead of that. We've got to put the pencils down on this and put the warrant out to print to distribute to everybody.
Very cognizant of that.
If you look at the number of Tuesday meetings that we have between now and that time, where next couple of meetings are gonna be pretty busy, it sounds.
I agree.
How many days do we have to advertise a public hearing? Ten?
I believe it's ten.
So we really don't have a lot of time.
No, you don't.
Well, let me ask you, does this board have any responsibility to do public hearing on, on?
Noise bylaw.
On which one?
The noise, number twenty-one.
The noise and the, and the street layouts.
The streets.
And the street layouts, I believe, are gonna be on the twenty-ninth.
Well, if there's a way for us to do both of them on the twenty-ninth?
Do everything on the twenty-ninth?
Well.
Have enough time to advertise twenty.
Well, today's the sixteenth. Is it ten business days or ten calendar days?
I think it's ten business days.
I think it might be calendar, but I'll check. I will check. If we can do it on the twenty-ninth, we will.
Well, and we'd want town council here for that discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay. And Mrs. Faniff, does the planning board need to first go through their public hearing on the noise bylaw before it comes to us?
I think they're scheduled for the next meeting, one of them. I think they already have those scheduled.
We don't have a joint meeting with them? They do it and then we do it?
Well, they need to be here for the, for the street layouts. They need to be here.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure if we've been invited to their meeting or if they're coming here. I don't know what their calendar looks like. We can do it jointly, yes, if they've advertised it.
Okay, so if they've advertised it, Mark, perhaps we can find out the date that they are having their hearing and then we can participate in that and have one.
And post you for their meeting and, sure. That makes sense?
We need a quorum if it's at their meeting too.
Right. And just, uh, in terms of next, our next meeting is on the twenty-ninth, which is a Monday because the first is a election day, so we're having our meeting on the twenty-ninth of February. I don't know why I decided to mention that now other than the fact that it's not a Tuesday.
We've mentioned it a couple of times already.
Anything else on the warrant?
I just had one other item I wanted to, um, just point out. Um, we received notice, um, actually on Friday afternoon that the, uh, two special acts, one for, uh, nine-eleven field granting us the authority to enter into a fifteen-year lease with DCR instead of the, uh, instead of the permit process we currently have, as well as the special act, um, for, uh, to grant Stony Brook Market an additional all-alcohol license. Uh, those are both signed on Friday, uh, February twelfth at three o'clock, three forty-eight, I think is what it said in the, uh, in the act that we got. So, um, we will be, you'll see, be seeing in the near future Stony Brook coming in, uh, applying for that all-alcohol permit. As you understand, they're the only ones that can apply for it. They're the only ones that you could issue it to. And, um, and we're gonna be looking to set up meetings with DCR to try and begin negotiation at least.
And with respect to the nine-eleven field, let me just again commend and thank Mister Hagerty for, um, his energy and persistence in getting that done. I, I think he'll acknowledge that when we had the meeting at the State House, it did not appear that DCF was going to be supportive and that it was, the skies were somewhat gray in getting that fifteen-year lease. But through the efforts of Mister Hagerty and our legislators and not, um, not letting this thing rest, we were able to move it through the State House and, uh, now we are able to enter into a long-term lease which would then allow us to re-carpet the, the playing surface. So, um, Mister Hagerty, again, on behalf of this board, sir, thank you for your continued efforts in that regard.
Just to second that, I mean, I was, I was at that meeting and you leave that meeting and you say, and this is never gonna go anywhere. These, you know, the folks in the room were pleasant but had zero interest in seeing this happen. But with Mister Hagerty's, um, you know, constant determination, as well as the great work by Carolyn Dykema, who's, uh, has been, um, you know, a great advocate for, for our town and for this particular issue, um, it came to fruition. So, yeah, Jim, again, well done.
And I agree. I think, I think Jim did a great job in, in pushing it to, you know, the state's level. And then I think Carolyn did a great job, um, along with, with Senator Eldridge to carry that ball, you know, over the line. I really think that I expect a DCR to provide, um, some more opposition to the article. And, and maybe, you know, we'll find, we'll find that.
Hasn't that ship sailed though?
Well, we, it, we now have the ability to do a fifteen-year lease. We have to negotiate a fifteen-year lease with DCR.
Yeah, but I assume that, that there's an obligation for them to negotiate in good faith and they cannot raise as an objection to the lease negotiations, the, uh, term of years.
I do not, no, the, the term of years is, is not the issue anymore. It will be, it'll probably be some of the other pieces. But I, I, I can assure you that our legislative delegation did not come this far, did not see this whole thing through. So we'll ensure that we, you know, that this process moves quickly. As you know, we do have the funding. The authorization was provided already by town meeting for the borrowing. When we're all set to go, this board will just need to authorize that borrowing.
So in terms of the negotiation of the lease and, uh, perhaps Mister Hagerty would know the answer to this and, and perhaps I should know the answer, but I don't. Is town council preparing the, the requisite documents to present to, uh, the state for that new fifteen-year lease? Where does that process stand right now? Do you know, Mister Purple, or does Mister Hagerty?
Uh, the last I had spoken with, with Representative Dykema, um, she's looking to try and set up a meeting with DCR as, as soon as possible to begin that process.
At, at this point, as the elected town clerk, I've had a step back away from all this, so I'm just expected cheering on the sides.
Well, do you need a, 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 a representative or a surrogate to stand in now and keep pushing this forward?
I think, uh, Mister Purple reads the tea leaves well on this, that this is, um, I, I don't. From my interactions with the DCR folks from my time years ago on the rec commission, um, they will not be doing cartwheels about having to enter in this agreement. Um, so I think Mister Purple's, um, I, I, I would say that it ain't over, that we really need to, uh, keep, uh, a firm, firm watch on this. But again, I, you know, as the clerk, I have to step away from this and gnash my teeth and be neutral.
Well, it would seem, and again, I don't want you to compromise your position, but it would seem that the next step is to present a fifteen-year lease to them for their review and anticipated signature.
That makes most, that makes sense to me.
And I guess, Mister Purple, my question is, who is doing that? Is anyone doing that? Who should be doing that?
I think one of the things, um, so I've been trying to, you know, Karen, Representative Dykema and I have been going back and forth in terms of getting in touch, but I think one of the things to do, there are several communities that do have multi-year leases of this nature with DCR. Um, I think it'd be beneficial for, through Representative Dykema's office to get ahold of some of these leases to use as templates, um, so that we're not reinventing the wheel. I think they'll give us what we need in terms of the, the, uh, the number of years as well as the ability to, um, you know, to repay the, repay the debt. So.
Not to extend this out any further, but, but why are we, uh, asking Representative Dykema to do the lease drafting work for us?
We're not, I just need to find out who DCR currently has agreements such as this with so we can get copies of them and have town council.
I think we already know that though, don't we, Mister Hagerty? We, we know that Brighton has one. And I believe, is it Newton or, we know Brighton has one.
Then we can read.
There was one other one too. I don't remember off the top of my head though.
A group in Brighton and Newton County Day School.
Yeah.
And there's a third, I believe, out of Worcester and there's another one, I believe, up, uh, up north. We have copies of at least two. I can get your copies of the two of the documents and I can make a phone call to somebody to get the other documents. I'll help you get those.
So I, I just don't want this to slip.
So he can be helpful on the sidelines as well and.
Okay.
So if he can, if, if they can provide me those, then I can work with town council too, to get that, uh, get that in some shape.
But I think your instincts are right on the money, um, on this.
Mrs. Faniff?
So the contact person with DCR is Mister Purple and the lease agreement is with the town of South Row, not a department? The obligation is with the town, correct?
It is with the town.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't know how we got there from this agenda, but I'm glad we did get there.
It was just my report, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Do you have any more reports?
No, I'm, I'm done, yeah.
I would move to approve consent items number one through four. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just gonna abstain on one.
Mister Kalenda abstaining on one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, anything else that the board wants to discuss? Eight fifteen, one of our, uh.
Oh, Affordable Housing Trust Committee meeting. Could we have a half an hour before one of our next meetings to close up twenty-six Gilmore Road?
I signed the, um, did I sign the purchase and sale or the deed, um, transfer that I slipped under your door the other night?
I believe that was a deed transfer.
A deed tran, I think it's all sold, Mrs..
No, I know, but we need to close up the financial end of it in our minutes.
All right.
Uh, we only need about fifteen minutes. One of our next meetings would be helpful.
February twenty-ninth?
That's fine. Thank you.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening.